Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The town select board is called to order May 22, 2025 at 6:02 PM. And today, we have a presentation of the annual town report. Hi, Lizanne, how are you? I'm going to read this. "In appreciation of David E. James. David James has been a pillar of the Kennebunkport community for more than 20 years. Born and raised in Plainfield, New Jersey, he moved to Kennebunkport in 1997 and quickly became involved in the town. Shortly after settling in, he joined the Town of Kennebunkport Budget Board and co-founded the Kennebunkport Residents Association for 23 years. He wrote the Kennebunkport Residents Association newsletter, serving as a modern-day town prior. His interests and involvement in the community extended across the town and beyond. He was a trustee of the Kennebunkport Conservation Trust, volunteered with the Graves Library, and the Kennebunkport Hysterical Society."
Historical.
Historical society, I'm sorry. "And served on the York County Budget Committee for 15 years. In 2019, the Town of Kennebunkport honored David with the Spirit of America Award for his dedication to keeping residents informed about issues affecting the community. The Town of Kennebunkport truly values and appreciates David's commitment to education, advocacy, and volunteerism."
So...
Would we like to give...
Can you guys all come up and present it to the family? Can we get some?
Do you guys want to come up? Yes. Okay. Do you want to come up and present? Is Erica up to the left? Do you want to go to the right? Okay. Can you just maybe like, yes? Thank you. Okay. One, two, three. One, two, three. Sheila, yes. Thank you. And can we see you presenting it to the family? So remember, you always keep your... Do you want to take it? For the audience.
Forty-five, twenty. Safe, first and smiling.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you guys have anything you want to say?
I have a little something.
Come right up to the podium.
Just want to say thank you all for recognizing my grandpa Dave James for this dedication. Of course, he did a lot for the community, but he also inspired others. I think anyone who knew him would be able to tell you a story of how he made a difference in their life. He was a natural leader in his career and his personal life, not because he knew better than others, but because he never stopped asking why and challenging the status quo. He taught me that no matter what you're dealing with, there's always a better way to do something and more to learn. So I challenge anyone who knew him to continue to honor his legacy and never stop learning, never stop growing. We can all be a better person today than we were yesterday. Thank you.
Very nice.
David would be so embarrassed.
Yes.
But so proud. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Executive session per MRSA-1 subsection 405-6E for consultation with the town attorney to discuss legal rights and duties. I need a motion.
Motion to go into executive session. Second.
First and second, all in favor. We'll be back shortly.[295.83]
You're up.
So we are, we are in executive session and I'm gonna take us out of executive session. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item four, approve the May eighth, twenty twenty five Select Board Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
First and second in discussion?
Yep.
All in favor? Public forum, this is not between for anyone who wants to address the board of selectmen with any issue that is not on the agenda.
My name is Benjamin Nest, I live at sixty-four Clement Huff Road, Kenny Muckport. I'm here tonight to get some answers to as to what I consider arbitrary decisions of waste collection pickup by Casella Corporation. I've been trying for several weeks to get answers as to why Clement Huff Road can't receive residential home site waste collection. I spoke into and left messages in text with the Kenny Muckport contact individuals, she's been very professional and helpful. I also met by chance a Casella representative and went over why our road should or should not have individual home pickup. Both have given me vague verbal reasons to which I stated Clement Huff Road Association would correct. So far my discussions with the contact people have been cordial, I continually asked both red representatives for written records. I've also been told someone would get back to me with the written answers, I'm still waiting. In all my discussions I've started, I've stated that our road association is willing to correct any deficiencies on our road. And I've driven around town and have seen similar and what I consider worse private roads that have what I'll now call reasonable pickup. Thank you for allowing me to speak at this issue and I'd like to see if we can maybe get some answers.
So my question is, is there any turn, there's two questions I have, how many houses are on your road?
There are nine residential and there's one commercial building.
And is there any way that you can turn, turn around a garbage truck?
Yes, I am the last house in there, we have a turnaround there that they've turned around, the fire trucks from, from Kenny Muckport have been down there doing some training sessions and they wanted to make sure they could turn around and they could turn around, I have a very wide driveway, but we also are going to make the, the end of the road bigger and we've said we're gonna do that, we can do that. We're gonna have the road graded probably within the next month, maybe less than that and that we've, we're gonna have the, with the grader, the guy that's gonna do the grading is gonna make that turnaround, you know, whatever they tell us, if they say it won't fit, we'll make it big enough to fit. That's, and, and I mean, I've never, again, I, I'm, I'm waiting for written, some kind of written paper that says why we can't get a service. Again, I've seen other places around town, I followed the maps around and, and checked to different places and just as an example, Lands End, okay, that's, they get, they get full pickup there and there's some roads that are a lot worse than ours.
So is there any other questions from the board?
Not, not a question.
Go ahead, no?
Well, do you have something?
No, I don't have a question.
Oh, okay.
I was just gonna say, i- is that a private road?
It is, yes.
Okay.
So maybe Eric LaBelle could help you with that.
I could take an act to just to try to find.
Well, Eric's here.
Oh, Eric's, I'll go, all right, great.
Just happens to be here.
Eric, Eric's here.
He's behind you. Let him come up, he needs to come up to the microphone.
The gentleman I spoke to though.
Don't get him mad.
Yeah. No, I'm not gonna do that, especially at my age.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, so as you all, I believe know, we've been working with a lot of different roads and a lot of different locations and been working with Casella, they've been very accommodating and they've been, you know, they've really gone out of their way to try to get down as many of the roads, roads as they can. This particular case, as I understand, you probably spoke with Rick, I believe, at Casella.
He didn't need a young lady with him when he was up there, probably two weeks ago.
Yeah, Ben Talia, yeah, so he's likely spoke with Rick and Talia, which they've been very good about it, it's certainly where communicating these concerns, these residential concerns that we have and trying to work through these details as to what people can do to help, to help if that's the case. The concern Rick, I, as I understand it, I don't wanna speak for Rick because it is, it's their equipment, it's their safety and their policies that we're dealing with here, but I think their concern is that the road one is not the standard, it's very narrow for vehicle comes the other way, there's really, you're somewhat stuck if you will on that road with, with, without an ability to really get out of there without backing your way all the way down the road, which is, they don't wanna get themselves in that circumstance. So I think that's a big part of their concern and I understand, what I understood, this is secondhand information, mind you, because I really would, Rick should probably speak for himself. The, that the end of the road is probably your home that has a cul-de-sac or a place to turn around at the very end. However, the in-between portions don't necessarily, are not as accessible as, as, as Mr. Nest's property is, so that's what I understand.
So Mike, my question is, do you think that Rick would be able to meet with Mr. Nest and talk this over and maybe?
He's done it with most, all other concerns, I don't see why he would not.
He was very good, very good.
Yeah.
All right.
So could you meet with both of them, I think Mr. Nest is looking for some explanation in writing as well?
Okay, yeah, cool, all right.
Thank you, anybody else in the public, come right up?
I'd like to piggyback on that concern, but that's not why I'm here. We have the same situation at Agamemnon's, Av in Cape Porpoise.
Yeah, Bill, introduce yourself if you would.
Uh, Bill Case, I live in Cape Porpoise, I've lived in Kenny Muckport for over thirty years. Anyway, we have the same concerns at, at Agamemnon's and there's plenty of room at the end to turn around, so.
Well, we, we prepared the, the turnaround, we, my in-laws made that turnaround years ago at the end of Langsford Road?
No, he's not, he's talking Agamemnon's.
Agamemnon's.
Oh, I thought you were talking about.
Off of Fisher Lane.
Yeah.
You know, part of it is a, a public road, a town road, but the, the last portion of it is private.
Okay.
But it's certainly accessible, big heavy equipment going down there all the time, they do a lot of work. So put me on the list.
How many houses are on that end?
Uh, probably seventy.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, the reason I'm here is to probably try to get an update on the comprehensive plan, what's happening with that, I'm sure you all have a copy of it and review it all the time, but I'm specifically concerned about the housing section and under the community, kind of, not fair if you don't have this in front of you, but under the community characters section, we will balance our appeal to vendor, to visitors on our commitment to protective rights and deeds of permanent residents. And then it goes into the housing section, we will host a range of housing types that offer options for everyone. There will be housing to support the needs of local residents and businesses, ample opportunities, opportunities for downsizing and aging in place, senior housing within walking distance to amenities and public spaces, assisted liv-, assisted living facilities to allow those in, in need of such assistance to stay in town, plentiful starter homes for young families and year-round rental units. Where are we on those issues?
You're familiar with Landon Woods and what's, what's occurring there, that there are six workforce housing units being built there. It's quite a, quite a celebration, these things, as you know, take, take time, Bill.
Two years, two miles from the center of town?
Well, yeah, I guess that's probably about right for the distance.
Well, let's not consider senior.
Senior housing within walking distance to amenities and public spaces. I understand the affordability section of it, I don't think that's the best place to build affordable housing, but there are no other options. The options are for any kind of density are, are areas that are accessible, town water and sewer and, and sidewalks. The town owns the largest parcel of land in the growth area, they've owned it since two thousand eighteen. You're in control as to what hous- housing happens in town. I see subdivisions going on at the end of Goose Rocks Road and way up by Goose Rocks Beach, that's not where the growth should be going in this town. One of the, the things in the, in the reports from one of the committees, public input it refers to, uh, traditional neighborhood characters such as Dock Square and Cape Porpoise as the most preferred type of development in, for the village parcel. Many of the lots in these neighborhoods are characteristic of what people love about the town and range from less than five thousand square feet to about twelve thousand. Traditional neighborhood designs today are based on the understanding the compact development provides the more, more pedestrians, a more pedestrian scale, given a smaller footprint, provides for more open space. The objective is to better serve by quarter acre lots than one acre lots. I'm very familiar with what they're referring to, what we call the T and D type of development. If you look at most of the town, the small towns, including Kenny Muckport, the growth took place in the center of town. I'm sure most of you remember that there used to be a grocery store, several grocery stores in Dock Square and a, and a hardware store in Dock Square, now it's all geared to, to seasonal residence. Fortunately, I live in Cape Porpoise and one of the reasons I ended up moving, I used to live on the edge of the Webpana Golf Course and I wanted a sense of community. In Cape Porpoise, you can walk to Bradbury's, you can walk to, well, it used to be a hardware store, my son used to work there. And so I've been an advocate for affordable housing for many, many years. As a matter of fact, one of the first subdivisions we did at High Point Farms. As a matter of fact, one of the first subdivisions we did at High Point Farms was for the purpose of putting in elderly housing. A friend of mine who, who, uh, was the, the original planner of Huntington Commons, uh, I just discussed the situation, uh, with him. The problem with Huntington Commons, in my opinion, was it wasn't connected to the town. Uh, of the Farragut, which is a much more successful project for the type of thing that I think we'd be talking about in here, you can walk to Hannaford from there, you can walk downtown, there's a sidewalk all the way. There should be some form of affordable elderly housing in town, even to downsize. John, you live in Foxbury Woods, right?
Your, your subdivision.
Exactly. That, almost all the people, is, is my recollection, almost all the people that bought in there were downsizing. They wanted to stay in town. But that's only one step. You get to the point where maybe those, and some of those were even a little larger than what I would have liked. I think the last, uh, two, two-bedroom units are probably some of the most desirable, but even they were like 1,700 square feet, which is much more than what some people really need. But, you know, I, I, I don't, I've sold houses, I've been in real estate for 40 years and real estate developing that long. And, uh, I've done six projects here in town. Foxbury Woods is probably one of the, the best ones. We had looked at the, what's now the village parcel of, that, that used to be the Frank property. We had visions of, of, of buying that and interconnecting it with Foxbury Woods. If you look at the Foxbury Woods plan, we have a right of way that goes all the way to Old Cape Road. And the intent of that was to eventually work town sewer. When we did Foxbury Woods, we were quite surprised. It wasn't the anti, we didn't really realize that the sewer didn't go up School Street because it can't because of the, uh, peat bog underneath there. We tried to bring it up. I forget what the name of the road, the, the old road, uh, that comes up by the, the police station. Uh, anyway, there's an old.
The Old Cape Road?
No, no, no.
On the other side?
Yeah, it's right beside the police station. There's a little subdivision, but that road goes all the way down to, uh.
Wilds.
Wilds District.
Wilds District Road. And that's where the sewer line comes in, the Wilds District Road, all the way to Cape Porpoise. And there wasn't any way, and it's not practical to bring it up to further the North Street. So the most practical thing, in our opinion anyway, is to eventually work its way up to Old Cape Road, put a sidewalk in all the way, and that was what our intent is. We did, uh, uh, Sharmatt Woods and that's interconnected with that piece of land as well. And when we did Wallace Woods, we're hoping to be able to do something more affordable in there, but there were other issues involved that we couldn't do that. But we still had our eyes on the, the Frank property. Why are we sitting on that piece of land when there's such a crying demand for elderly housing? I, I, you know, we have a lot of friends.
Because of money.
And, and over the year, I've sold a ton of real estate. I can remember when we, we used to sell oceanfront properties on Ocean Avenue for $400,000. That's how far back I go. Now you can't even buy a building lot in town for $400,000. And the comprehensive plan at that time, when it was written back in, uh, what, 2022 or something like that, the median house at that time was almost a million dollars. Now it's well over there. The median lot price is $400,000. You're sitting on the, the most valuable piece of real estate for the future development. Why?
Well, it, it, I, Bill, you know, if you and I could decide together, I would, it would be easy to move right ahead and do it, but with, there, there are a lot of voices in the town. There's a lot of different ideas of what to do with that property. It's a matter of, it's a beauty of our town meeting government is we need to get some serious consensus of planning. And so we're, we're working it.
This is the comprehensive plan.
I understand.
Who approved it?
I understand.
Who approved the comprehensive plan?
But the comprehensive plan didn't specifically call out a specific part of land and there is, there are people in the community that have voiced very strongly that they would like to set this, because there's not, as you have stated, there's not much open land left. So there is this strong contingency in town that wants to keep this land for the future, for future generations.
Well, take it out of the growth zone.
So, yeah, so I, I don't think we're gonna.
We're not, but I, I hear you and I, you know, I resonate with your concerns.
Anyway, you know, it's, it's, it's really frustrating. I'm, I mean, I'm 82 and I've got friends that, and, uh, local people that are older than I am and they're all, uh, we have a little group of widows. We call the Campfire Girls. We have them over our, they're all widows. They live in single-family homes. They would love to downsize. They have no place to go but out of town. And I remember when we did Wallace Woods, Wally and Ginny Reed.
Forget it.
No, we, we hear you. We hear you.
No, you don't. How many years can go by? You know, Wally and Ginny Reed, you know the Reed family?
Yes, I do.
I'm sure you do. They were forced to leave town when they got to the age where they had no other options. Pillars of the community. They've lived, they own so many businesses. Wally's, you know, headed the Memorial Day Parade.
Yep.
Get him out of town. He's too damn old.
No. Yeah. A, a lot of it has to do with the, the cost of it and, and what it would do to our budget, et cetera. And a- again, it would have to go to vote.
We can't argue this.
Why is the cost prohibitive? Because you paid too much for the land. We had the abutting piece of land, uh, which is now Wallace Woods, which was named in memory of Wally and Reed Lane was a member of, of the Reeds. We paid 540,000 for 20 acres, or maybe it was, it wasn't 20 acres, 12 acres that abutted that and, and probably less than that for Sharmatt Woods and, uh, and Foxbury Woods. It was only 40 net acre. We always look at things in the cost of net developable acres. You had about 40, 40, what, four? 40, 45,000? Uh, I mean, uh, 40, 40 to 45 acres of net developable land. The thing is half-widlet. I mean, and the infrastructure cost to, to put that road in, where the hell did you come up with a $10 million price tag? So you're the one that put it, the town in that.
I think it was location. It was location.
Our location was right beside it. How can you call?
How many years ago was that before we bought the land?
Two.
Just two?
Two.
But, and you bought it from?
The Reeds.
Right. I think they were being very nice.
No, it was negotiated right from the very beginning and it was, it wasn't through Wally and Ginny, it was the family. Because they, they, they had, some of them thought that they were going to be, uh, uh, building in, and Bob and Jan, uh, lived in there as well. So, uh, you know, that was our first thought is to do condos in there. But in two years, I think it was 12, uh, acres and, uh, nine net developable acres. I think we got nine units in there. Uh, plus Bob and Jan's wasn't part of that, uh, they had already owned their own separate. But now how, we were prepared to go to auction and we might have gone up to $3 million. And we were absolute blown away. You bail these guys out, they paid three and a half million dollars for it, which was way more than what it was worth at the time. And, uh, so, you know, you want, bail them out, bail them out.
Thanks, Bill.
Now we're stuck with it as taxpayers.
Anybody else in public forum? Hello?
Hi, Tracy O'Rourke, Town Clerk. I just wanted to let our residents know that absentee ballots are available for the June 10th, um, annual town meeting. So you can either call the office at 207-967-1610 to request your ballot or just come into the office. And the last day to request a ballot is Thursday, June 5th at 5:00 PM. So if you do want a ballot, make sure you come in before that to request it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in public forum? Is there anybody on Zoom?
There are no names.
Hands raised. Okay, I have something for public forum.
Oh, no.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we gather to recognize and honor someone who has served this community with steadfast dedication, thoughtful leadership and unshakable commitment to the people of Kenny Bunkport. After 18 years on the select board, elected first in 2007, Sheila Matthews-Bow is retiring from her role as a member of this board. And while it's difficult to imagine this body without her steady presence, tonight we reflect with deep gratitude in all she has given to the town she loves. Sheila's service has spanned nearly two decades, a time of change, growth and challenge in Kenny Bunkport. Through it all, Sheila brought a deeper, brought to every discussion a deep respect for our town's culture and served as a representative of the business community. Sheila, your service is more than the votes you've taken or the meetings you've attended. It is a, and it's in the way you've listened all the way and showed up. The way you have never forgot that every decision we make impacts real people in our neighborhoods. We thank you for your 18 years of thoughtful leadership, your grace under pressure, your institutional knowledge and your unwavering belief in the importance of local government done well. On behalf of the select board and the people of Kenny Bunkport, thank you, Sheila. You leave a legacy of service that will not be forgotten. And though your chapter of the board is ending, you'll always be part of this community's heart. We wish you joy, good health and many relaxing mornings without agenda packets. Congratulations on your retirement and thank you from all of us. And it's been a pleasure to work with you all these years. And now we have a couple things. This is a bag full of money.
Oh, it's empty.
This, I haven't seen this yet.
Oh, goodness.
Let me see if I.
There you go.
That's perfect. You bet.
Well, look at that.
Oh, you bet.
Huh?
Yeah.
That's beautiful.
Sheila, stand up next to him.
Folks will know that Sheila's instrumental in putting together Prelude. So this is a very appropriate.
She's the queen of Prelude.
Yeah, the queen of Prelude.
And fireworks.
You know, I, the one thing I have to say is, um, over the 18 years, I have truly enjoyed working with the town, meeting wonderful new people, um, whether they're on my side or not. And, um, it's just been a pleasure. It, it's been a total pleasure. And if I, the one thing I want to leave is the fact that I'm, I'm leaving a wonderful board, I'm leaving a wonderful town manager. And, um, you know, uh, carry on and start, don't argue, just say what you say. And if somebody doesn't agree with you, well, that's just the way it is. And, um, and I thank everybody who show up, because we've had some meetings when there's been nobody. So, um, thank you all and I'm riding into the night, as they say, on my way. Thank you all.
Item number seven. Arbor Day proclamation. David, would you like to read that?
Sure. This is the Arbor Day proclamation for the 153rd anniversary from 1872 to 2025. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas in 2025, it is the 153rd anniversary of the holiday and Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and in the, and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Whereas Kennebunkport has been recognized as a Tree City USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for the past 48 years and desires to continue its tree planting ways. Now therefore, we, the Select Board of the Town of Kennebunkport, do hereby proclaim today, May 22nd, 2025, as the 153rd anniversary celebration of Arbor Day. Further, we urge all our citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support the efforts to protect our trees and woodlands.
Very nice.
Amen. Amen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Item eight. Codification of the Tides Beach Club LLC 930 Kings Highway Liquor License Findings. I'm going to read the decision so everybody understands. Notice of Decision, Tides Beach Club Liquor License Application. Ms. Nelson. At its meeting on May 19th, 2025, the Town of Kenny Bunkport Select Board voted three to one to deny the Tides Beach Club liquor license renewal application submitted on March 20th, 2025. The denial was based on the following grounds. Noncompliance of licensed premises or its use with any local ordinance or other land use ordinance not directly related to liquor control. As detailed in the notice of violation, the NOV issued on May 15th, 2025, the Tides is currently in violation of multiple versions, multiple provisions of the town's land use ordinance as well as its beach use ordinance. These violations including expansion and conversion of a nonconforming use and commercial use of Goose Rock's Beach are extrac-
Inextricably.
That's a good one. Tied to the sale of liquor in the Tides as the NOV states. In 2020, in 2021, the town pursued to its emergency powers and in the light of the ongoing COVID-19 emergency, briefly permitted the Tides to expand food and drink service onto the, onto its lawn. That temp- that temporary authorization expired in 2021, but the Tides Restaurant continues to serve guests sit-down service, including alcohol on the front lawn. Since at le- at least 2020, the Tides has offered cocktails to go and takeout meals from its restaurant, unlike sit-down service, which is capped by the number of seats in their restaurant. Takeout service may be provided to an unlimited number of people. Takeout service also facilitates eating and drinking in areas where it has not traditionally been permitted, such as the beach. Additionally, the NOV notes that, and we agree, that the Tides Liquor License Application depicts the area where drinks will be served to include the lawn. That area has not traditionally been a part of the Tides' nonconforming restaurant use. I need a note, I need a.
No, actually, there's, there's some more at the back.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Under the Tides changes it practices, the board cannot permit the Tides to serve liquor. Accordingly, the board denies the Tides requested liquor license renewal under 28-AMRS subsection Any person aggrieved by this decision has 15 days from the date of this notice to appeal to the Bureau of Alcoholic Beverages and Lottery Operations. Alan Daggett, Select Board Chair.
So I'd like to make a motion to accept the written findings and authorize the chair to sign.
Second.
I have a first and second. Any discussion? Here or none? All in favor?
Let's call out the vote.
What's that?
Let's call the vote. We call out the vote. It's three, three, four. Yes, thank you.
Three, two.
It's three, two.
Thank you. Yeah.
Okay.
Is it three, two?
Yes.
Or is it four, one?
I, I did vote to codify it because it is what the board voted, although I was the one who didn't vote for it, but.
So it's four, one.
Four, one. Okay.
Oh, I thought, okay.
I thought, I'm sorry. Okay, good. Okay. Public hearing to consider. Public hearing to consider.
Did you want to get his contact info, because he's leaving?
Public hearing to consider applications for vitals licenses for the period from June one, twenty twenty-five, through May thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. I'd like to move the whole slate. I'd like to have a motion for the whole slate with the exception of a Tides end because we have to have a discussion on that.
So moved?
Second.
First and second. Any more discussion? Here or none? All in favor? Dave, did you vote?
I voted.
Okay. All right. Five, zero. Yep. Okay. Excuse me.
Ten.
Ten. Consider the renewal liquor license submitted by Seaside. Oh, yeah. I'm sorry about that. So, yeah, we have to deal with the Tides. So. Let's, let's go ahead and talk about the Tides. Okay?
So I can make-
You want to start it off?
Do we need to vote on the others first, though?
We did.
We did.
That was last week.
You voted on it. Yeah.
So I, if you're willing, I'd like to make a motion. Is that okay? All right. So I'll, I'll make a motion to, um, accept the Tides, um, Victor's license with the following conditions. Condition one is limit the service of meals and beverages to the interior of the restaurant, the porch, and room service. Condition two, no meals or beverages to go except for coffee, tea, water service to Tides hotel guests. Condition three, meals and beverage service limited to sixty-six seats, which in this case would include the interior or porch only. And noting that the board is willing to readdress these conditions stated, uh, just stated at a later date, depending on the outcome of a now planned meeting between the Tides and the town.
Second.
I have a first and second. Any discussion? Any public discussion? You're, come right up to the, and just please state your name and where you're from.
Sure. Hi, um, my name's Tyler Reynolds. We have actually, I've not met any of you before, but I've seen you on camera. So it's, it's like I'm in the-
Speaking to the microphone?
I'm in the TV show now. It's like, I've, like, I've come into the screen. So I'm with EOS Corporate. I helped found the company, but I wanted to come because I feel like from the videos that I've watched, something has not come through from us to you, which is like, we're Mainers too. I was born in Portland, my wife was born in Portland, her dad was born in Portland, his dad was born in Portland, my dad went to Brunswick High School, my sisters were born in Portland, grew up in Portland, went to high school in Portland. So I just want to be clear, I was born on Munjoy Hill, not even in the hospital, I was born at home. So we're like, I have more connections to the state of Maine than I do anywhere else as like a family. I come here, my wife's family is a hundred and fifty people, reunion every summer. Okay. So I find the sense of like, they're from away, they're others, is just like, maybe something has gotten broken down, because I have a lot of pride in Kennebunkport. I come and stay every summer for a week. I actually stay at Hidden Pond, and I go to Goose Rock's Beach where there's lots of pictures of my kids on the beach. So I feel like we have just somehow not been able to communicate, and I really think there's not going to be a problem resolving the issues. There are some things that we don't agree. For example, with many of the things that were said in these decisions, factually, we don't agree about that, but that doesn't mean that we can't compromise. And so I'm really looking forward to the meeting next Wednesday. I look forward to seeing you, and I hope everybody's there. I, I've heard only two people are there, but I hope all five of you can come, uh, on Wednesday. But I think there's a real opportunity to resolve whatever the issues are, because I'm not sure if you feel like we haven't heard you, or we haven't actually heard you, or you haven't heard what we're doing. So I hope we can res, resolve this, but can I talk now specifically about the sixty-six seats? So that is something which we actually don't agree about substantively, but I do think if you'll, if you'll, if you'll permit me, nobody's eating on the porch right now because it's freezing. I was over there, I walked on the beach, and it's freezing right now, so nobody's eating on the porch, so I suppose it doesn't really matter. But I guess we want to say that if we, I mean, you're going to vote and you'll decide, so you don't need my agreement or our consent. But I would say that with the knowledge that we, we certainly don't consent to the sixty-six seats as a factual determination, we actually just don't know. We're actually not saying that you're wrong. We're actually saying we don't know that eighty is correct or that sixty-six is correct. So we can't concede that point. We have to do some more research, um, particularly about like the parking spaces, like this is a whole discussion we have to have next week. But I think that we would appreciate the approval, the conditional approval of the license, because that would mean if you don't approve it, that the business completely closes on May thirty-first. Like, there'll be no, no restaurant, no liquor service, doesn't matter that we have a temporary license. The restaurant, we can't serve liquor without the food, so the business will close. And that does, that generates a huge amount of the total business of that restaurant, of that property every year. So I hope that you approve it. I look forward to the meeting next week with Emily and hopefully whoever can come from the board. But, you know, I think that there's going to be a lot of agreement, and I think we can hopefully make a lot of progress next week. So I'm not sure if anybody else wants anything from the Tides.
Well, I think that's a, a really good start, and hopefully they can, uh, Mary Beth and John will be there, and I hope you guys have a great conver, conversation.
Can you just repeat the, the-
Emily, Emily, just go up to the mic, please.
I think she, you want me to repeat the conditions?
Yeah, I'd just like for you to repeat the list of conditions, please.
Yep, no problem. So the approval would be dependent on the final conditions, which is condition one, limit the service of meals and beverages to the interior of the restaurant, the porch, and the rooms, and room service. Condition two is-
So let's just stop. So that is the interior spaces and the porch. Beverage service and food service can occur as well as room service.
But not on the front lawn. It's just, please, just a second. It's free.
Yep. Uh, condition two is no meals or beverages to go except for coffee, tea, water service to Tides hotel guests. Condition three is meals and beverage services limited sixty-six seats, um, you know, which would be served within the interior or the porch only, which is condition one. And then the note that I said at the bottom is that the board is willing to readdress the conditions, um, stated above at a later date, depending on the outcome of an now planned meeting, which is next week, Wednesday, um, between the Tides and the town.
Sure.
I just have one point. So just one point. There are just the two businesses that serve food at, on Goose Rock's Beach. And I will tell you, if you don't know, I did not know, but you can get takeout food service and takeout alcohol prepared for you at the store for the beach. It is just an option right on their website. So I just would like to point out that it would be nice if we weren't treated differently from a food service perspective.
I would totally agree with that.
Yep, I totally agree with that also.
And we, we know we need to take a look at that.
Okay, great, okay. So next week then.
Yep, next week. So that's-
Anybody?
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead. Anybody else? So, what did you want to add?
No, I'm good.
All right. I have a first and a second. All in favor? Three. A deny. Two. Three to two.
Deny the Wittlers?
No.
I'm, I'm sorry, could we make sure what the motion is?
The qualifications is what I'm-
So I'm, 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 the motion was to approve the Wittler's license, given these three conditions, and noting that we're meeting and we would potentially readdress this as a complete board leader. So the motion is to approve the Wittler's license with these three conditions.
What if you don't agree with the conditions? I don't agree with the conditions, but I want them to get the Wittler's license.
Well, then you-
I think it would be wise to, to-
You would have to make a second, you would have to make a different motion then. This motion is to prove the Victor's, Vic-
Well, all right. I'm sure, I'll approve it because I want them to keep the Wittler's license.
They're going to have-
And you're going to talk about it next week.
No, they will have the license. These conditions will talk about lifting, but it's just the conditions.
Okay.
They will have the license.
Okay.
So we want them to serve.
So they, they will have a license, they will, they will be able to serve within these conditions, and then after we meet next Wednesday, you know, we retain the right to come back to the full board. John and I can make a recommendation if we deem that we think we should make a change of this.
Okay.
So did you want to change your vote?
Yes, I'll, I'll vote.
So this could be-
So they can have their Wittler's license.
Can we recall the vote?
Recall the vote.
I'm going to recall the vote, yeah.
Go.
All in favor? Five, zero. Okay, thank you.
Alan, could I take a moment?
Absolutely.
Uh, I, I'd like to add something into this, into this discussion, and particularly in, in light of, uh, of what I'm hoping and looking forward to a meeting, uh, next week. Uh, we have been very focused in these meetings for obvious reasons. It's been the liquor license, it's been the Wittler's license, so, uh, but I, I do want to bring attention to the issue of commercial use, uh, on, on the beach, on the sand. Uh, this is something that is, uh, of, of real interest to, uh, a number of, of residents at Goose Rocks. Uh, and it's important to know that, uh, and for you to know, that we have sat down, the same group that's going to be sitting with you with EOS, uh, last year, uh, on a face-to-face meeting, uh, and the condition of shuttling guests from Hidden Pond, uh, and, uh, the fact that the Tides has twenty-one rooms, just a little over twenty rooms, Hidden Pond somewhere over fifty, uh, therefore, I say therefore, but, uh, there are a hundred and fifty-plus, uh, chairs, uh, that are on the beach, uh, that's at least been reported. So the, the question is, uh, what's occurring on Goose Rock's Beach sand? Uh, and, you know, the history from, from your website, it was, you know, the, the hotel was built in eighteen ninety-nine. Uh, and then in the early fifties, it was owned by the Allen family, and it was known, I remember, I grew up, I'm, I'm from away, although I've never missed a year in Kennebunkport. Uh, I lived in upstate New York, but we rented, and then my parents bought, at any rate. So I'm away, you're a native. But I remember well, as a kid, growing up, it was Allens By the Sea, uh, and then for forty-some years, it was owned by, uh, the Ananouski family, uh, and then Henderson's and her daughter, at that time called Tides By the Sea. Uh, we all remember it well. But then in, in twenty, not but, and, in, in twenty-eleven, uh, Tides underwent a, a major makeover. Uh, I like to say it was shabby chic and it turned into just plain chic. Uh, you guys did a, you did a wonderful job, and, uh, the EOS did, and my, or Tim, but, yeah, it was Tim.
Take credit.
Yeah, it was Tim. Yeah, you were, you were wise to buy him. Uh, and at that point, though, and here, here, here to me is my, my point. In twenty-eleven, it was rebranded as the Tides Beach Club. So what changes in the name of a, a hotel by the sea and a beach club? And I think what changed is what I can read directly from your website. Uh, it says that our guests can find everything they need with the help of our summertime beach tenders, offering all the essential amenities for the best day at Goose Rock's Beach. During the summer months, our beach tenders will set you up with chairs, towels, umbrellas, kayaks, stand-up paddleboards, and will even take food and non-alcoholic beverage orders to be delivered right, to be delivered right to the beach. Keep your feet in the sand and don't worry about a thing. That sounds like a resort and a beach club. That sounds like a commercial operation on the sands of Goose Rock's Beach. Even in the Hidden Pond, it says, we've got everything you need. This is talking to the Hidden Pond folks, uh, lounge chairs, towels, water and sunscreen, just bring your suit, hopefully. And then, uh, so a, a, as I look at this, as I look at the town ordinances, particularly our beach ordinance, uh, this is, I think, a clear example of an expansion of a nonconforming commercial operation within the residential zone. Uh, I believe that the Tides must return to provide services not as a beach club or a resort, but rather as the fine hotel and restaurant it is, providing access but no commercial services upon the adjacent family beach, which is Goose Rock's Beach. So this is another point that we're going to hopefully, uh, be discussing, uh, and it's a very important point to, uh, a number of folks in that residential area. So thank you for, and, and looking forward to the discussions. Thank you.
Any more discussion? No? Okay. Okay. Item ten, consider the renewal liquor license submitted by Seaside Hotel Associated DBA Non-Nanum Resort located at ninety-five Ocean Avenue.
So moved?
Second.
First and second, and the staff has recommended approval.
That's important.
All in favor? Five, zero. Item eleven, consider the real, renewal liquor license submitted by Noon's Lobster Hut, Inc., located at Nine Mills Road.
So moved?
Second.
And the staff recommends approval. All in favor? Five, zero. Item twelve, consider the renewal liquor license submitted by Roma Pizza KPT, located at five Union Street. Uh, staff does recommend approval.
So moved?
Second.
First and second, all in favor? Thirteen, Beach Advisory Committee Presentation by Pam Zaleski.
Zakansky. Not an easy name.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Pam Zakansky, and I am the chairman of the Beach Advisory Committee. And so I'm here kind of to give you the annual update on the committee, and I'm happy to answer any questions at the end. But, um, just for everyone's, um, edification, the Beach Advisory Committee was formed in two thousand and twelve as part of the beach use agreement, which was entered into by the town, uh, backlot and beachfront owners, as well as the, um, the town and back and beachlot, beachfront property owners. The mission of the committee is to provide guidance regarding the management of the beach in accordance with the beach use agreement. Um, specifically, the charges are any proposed revisions to the beach use agreement, um, any further regulations contemplated in terms of the town ordinance and use of Goose Rocks, uh, making recommendations to the Select Board on expenditures from the beach maintenance fund, uh, renewing the informal resolution of complaints between parties to the beach use agreement, and also assisting in resolution of problems relating to the use of the beach, and offering recommend, recommendations to the Select Board if solutions are warranted. Um, just in terms of how the, uh, committee functions, we meet in this room six to eight times a year, typically on the third Monday of the month. The fact that we've been able to meet, uh, as, in a hybrid format's been very helpful in having year-round participation, which has been great. Um, there are eight members of the committee, um, there are elections each year to fill the open spots. There's four beachfront seats, two backlot seats, uh, one at-large member, and then one member of the Select Board who's appointed each year to the committee. Current members, um, in terms of beachfront owners are Carol Sherman, Paul Hayes, Chaz Cadwell, and Holly Mudd. Backlot owners are myself and Bill Yonker, and Kate Bauer Burke is the at-large member, and the Select Board rep is John Dykstra. Um, so that's who we are. I am the chair, Kate is the vice chair, Holly is the secretary. Um, we have three working groups that focus on the natural resources, which is led by Bill Yonker. Uh, we have communications led by Holly Mudd, and traffic and safety led by Chaz Cadwell. In terms of the current issues that we've been working on, really are the trash transition. It's been a, a big issue down at the beach, and we've worked on that quite a bit. I think Kate's been instrumental in terms of trying to educate people, and it has been a transition, which seems to be going fairly well, there's a few hiccups, but, um, whatever. The other thing that's been on our agenda for quite some time is the commercial activity on the beach. Um, we've also worked on the beach cleanup, uh, protection of the plovers, reviewing of the parking rules, and also supporting the efforts to sustain the beach in fight, in the face of rising, uh, sea levels. In the past, we've also worked on improving the signage at the beach in terms of what the rules and things like that are, as well as rules for dogs on the beach. I think one of the other questions that was asked in your request for our presentation tonight was just anything that we needed from the Select Board. And I think really just the continued slash increased enforcement of the rules that we have at the beach, specifically, um, parking and dogs, I think are two of the things that are of concern to people, um, at the beach. And I think the other thing, we're just really looking forward to continue to working with the town to make the, this the best beach it can be. And that's, everyone is very well-intentioned, and it's a, it's a fun committee to work on, and I've really enjoyed kind of getting to know you and other people at the beach. Happy to answer any questions or anything that anyone has on their mind.
Any questions?
Just, what do you find is the parking issues?
I think there's too much demand for too few spaces. I think that's really the biggest issue, and I think, um, you know, the enforcement and that kind of thing, I think there's also concern by residents in town that they can't get to the beach and park. So those are some of the things that we're looking at.
Any thoughts? I mean, it, it, your, your point of other residents outside of Goose Rock's Beach being unable to use that beach is a very big issue. to use that beach is a very big issue. And so I might appreciate some conversations about how that is going to get addressed, because...
We don't have the answers.
You don't have the answers.
We're just putting together the questions right now, yeah.
No, but I know, but I think you really need to focus on that, because it is becoming a, it is an issue that people outside of Goose Rocks do have. And we've been down there before, I mean, there are cars that are parked down there who live down there, and there are cars that are parked down there as storage units that are taking spots. So I think the Beach Advisory Committee needs to come up with some proposals that address those issues specifically.
Yeah, those are both on the list of things that we're looking at. We're just getting started on that topic, so it's complicated.
I'd like to just give you a lot of kudos for how you care for the beach, and, and every year, you know, cleaning it up, taking care of the dunes, taking care of the birds. I mean, there's not a lot of people who are willing to do that, and you seem to come up with enough volunteers, or, you know, as many as you can find, and so I give you my best. I think you do a great job.
No, thank you. I mean, it's, many people make light work. I think a lot of people will come for a little while, but it's a, it's a group effort, and people love the beach, so they do.
She's gonna have some time on her hands.
That's right. We'll let you know. Yep. Go ahead. Come on up.
Hi, Kate Bauer Burke, and I'm going to shortcut something I'm working on by maybe getting some input now that Eric's here and John's here. Both of you were involved in negotiating the trash contract, the new arrangement. I just wondered if my, I got a kind of troubling information today that I think was misinformation, but to speed the trap up, I'm going to ask you. Are we going to have the full-size trash barrels, new ones, at each entrance this year?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. Because I was told it was only going, by somebody who I think is new on the staff and didn't understand it, that it was only going to be Dyke Road, Jeffries, and Proctor.
No.
So that's good, because we got to get ready to get the new stickers on to try and get people to do it. So I wanted to get started on that. Thank you very much.
Can I just, can I, this is, they're going to have trash bins, not recycling bins? Is everything going into the trash bin?
Yes. Yeah, we, we can't do recycling, we just really can't trust Joe Q. Public to keep it clean.
But Cassel is fine with that, or?
We're trying to get it in a container. That's the aim here.
Step one. Step one.
We did, that's why we went with those colorful stickers, Little Lobster, in the, only in the barrel. And there were a couple of times last year that were a little problematical, obviously the busiest, like the Fourth of July timeframe. The rest of the summer, people were pretty good about it, and we're hoping with the bigger barrels that we'll have this year, and renewing that, get it in the barrel, not on the side, we'll have it, it'll work.
And I'll, I'll give you one more piece that we'll need to discuss and decide during our next meeting, and that is, we have a choice of, at each location, a single 96 or two 64s.
Which ones are the least likely to blow over? I guess that's kind of one of my concerns.
You know, and I, you might think it would, I think the 64s, the 96 has a lot, it's like a barn, it's, you know, it's the area that the wind's going to catch.
Yeah.
And I think, personally, I think we're much better. I mean, that's, that's a hundred and twenty-eight.
That's a hundred and thirty, or a hundred and twenty-eight.
That's a hundred and twenty-eight gallons instead of 96, and I kind of like the idea. So something to talk, we need to talk about.
Yeah, we'll talk about it.
We'll talk about it, but just to be, put it in your thinking.
Okay, perfect. Do you have any other questions?
No, you guys do a great job.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 14, Growth Planning Committee Presentation by Daniel Saunders.
Maybe a little bit less exciting. Growth planning is, of course, near and dear to my heart. But, you know, I didn't know when all that really started. When I got asked to do this, what's the history? I said, geez, I know about 2005 and on, right? I didn't know a lot about the history. So fortunately, I had a copy of the old 1996 plan, and the folks back then did a nice job of documenting the history. So our first plan was actually in 1965. It was a master plan by the planning board that was put together. And then in 76 to 77, they actually did a comprehensive plan, that's what they called it. It was in 1985 that the Growth Planning Committee was formed, and then in 87, it was made a standing committee. So since 1987, we've had a Growth Planning Committee as part of our, our town boards and committee. They started to put together another comprehensive plan, because that one, and I think it was in 82, was all of 24 pages. Today, it's about 680 that we sent.
Two volumes, yeah.
It's two volumes. We got 31 pages of recommendations, right? So it's, it has changed. They started putting together the plan, but at that point, the town, the state had come up or was working on the Growth Management Act, so they decided to wait until what the state came up with. And then once the state came up with some, it, you know, going from 88, it took them till 96 to massage a plan that met the requirements of the townsfolk, but also met the Growth Management Act requirements, okay? Around 2003, they were looking at doing another revision, because you have to redo these every 10 years, and that one met the state planning offices, no, I'm sorry, it didn't meet the state planning office, so they decided to hold off on bringing it to the townsfolk. They massaged it and then brought it together in 2005, and unfortunately, that one was approved by the state planning office, but it was not approved by the voters. And it had to do with things that they had changed in land use ordinances and in the economic section. So that was a big kind of shakeup of the board. That's when I joined in 2006. We had three remaining members, of which two really participated, and one ended up resigning, but Charlie Reed and Janet Bellout, they stayed on the committee, which was excellent, because it helped bring these bunch of new, wet-behind-the-years folks into the planning process. And I think one of the key things we did back then is we decided we were going to bring each chapter during one of the warrants. So every election, we would have a chapter or two, depending on what, how well we did, on the warrants going forward. And that's why it took us to 2012 to actually finish the plan. And that one was approved by the, was, a couple of tweaks, was approved by the state planning office. And then moving forward, we, we came to our 2022 plan, which we throw in COVID in there, we were doing things remote, but we were, again, that was another plan that we brought together, which is what you have today. And one of the key things we wanted in that was to be able to pull out all the strategies, because in the previous plans, you'd have to go through every single chapter to try to find a specific strategy. And this, we pulled them all out, like our, here's our action list, 31 pages of actions. And a, a good point the gentleman brought up about, you know, all, he read part of our, the narrative, but in those strategies, there's like 16 strategies that are dealing with housing. And sometimes the strategies within this, this plan will conflict with one another, right? We want to conserve land, but we want affordable housing. It's hard to do both. So it's a, it's a very strong, a big challenge for us as a town to meet the various requirements we would like to do on housing, elderly housing, et cetera, at the same time do other things to combat what we're seeing with climate change and rising seas and so forth. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. As for our current work, or as for our normal work, we, we certainly assign some strategies to ourselves, so that 31 pages, I think we have six, so we have some, we have some flexibility there. We support other committees or boards on their actions as needed. We review any proposed land use ordinance. So we're not the only ones that will come up with a land use ordinance. Planning board may come up with one, it really could be another committee. But if it comes to us, before it can go to you guys, it's supposed to come to the GPC, and we're supposed to review it and make sure that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, okay? And then we're required to do a periodic review of our Growth Management Act and our permits, okay? So that was a piece, the state wasn't very keen on having growth permits, right? But we have a, a policy in place on how we manage those. We're using a, a 10-year average, and it's 110% of that 10-year average. So we will allow growth, but it's a way for us to kind of control it so that we can stay on top of that associated with our, our capital plan, and ensure we have sewer capacity, water capacity, et cetera. Mission goal, I mean, our, really our goal is maintaining that comprehensive plan, that's our mission. But we also work on other things associated with land use ordinances. For instance, right now, because of some changes that have occurred in, I guess, in the marketplace, we're looking at how we can support agricultural, animal husbandry, which does occur in, in our town, with allowing them to use, have a second conditional use on their property to hold events. So that's another source of income that can help those farms, you know, stay in business, okay? So that's what we're working on now. There has been one that was approved by the planning board between Onantum and Black Rock Farm, and so we've, we've talked with them about how we can put an ordinance that provides that flexibility but doesn't lead to unintended consequences. Our meeting cadence is that we normally meet every first and third Tuesday of the month. Sometimes we'll do more, sometimes we'll do less, depending on the work. And see. Current members, we actually have a full board and both alternates, which is really good.
That's, that's very good.
Yeah, it's not often that we get there. So Tom Smith is our newest alternate, joined this year. Rob Wangle also joined, I think it was end of last year. And we have Anne Marie Martin, Jay Nevilleen, Elizabeth Johnson, Paul Hogan, and myself. Now for, and in our rule, I mean, the alternate members, they can do everything but vote, right? Unless one of the regular members is not there. So we want them participating, bringing up ideas, helping us set the direction of the board, look at the comprehensive plan, see what their concerns are, and then talk about them. And from feedback, just, what we would look from you guys is feedback on what we're doing, right? And any special land use topics that you may have that may not be listed on the plan, may not be a strategy, but you have concerns with and you would like us to look at and take address. And then if there's a particular strategy within the comp plan that you think is not getting the attention it needs, to let us know, and we can work on that with the other committees. And then any relevant information for residents is, we do like feedback. You mentioned that it's not very often, but sometimes nobody shows up to these meetings? Well, it's very often, with the complaint, if anybody, nobody shows up. It's only if we do something that's a little bit interesting, like the rumor ordinance that we did five or six years ago. We had a full house, it was great. So if you're interested, please, you know, feel free to attend. We are, you know, on TV, so you get to watch us. But we also have a webpage, and there's a link there. If you have a new question, you can send us an email, we're happy to respond. So with that, any questions?
And Galen is obviously an integral part of your, is Galen work closely?
Oh, yes, absolutely. Absolutely. We always have either Nadia or Galen at the, at our meetings. Absolutely.
Very good.
You guys do a really good job, and we really, really actually appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll bring that back. Thank you much.
Thank you. Item 15, consider abatement for sewer services charge for 44 Mills Road, MBL 022-009-058 for Robin Reeves.
Is there a reason for that?
There is.
Peter is here and is happy to give you information on each of these abatements.
Good evening. My name is Peter Conroy. For those of you, I think I've met all of you at this point. I'm the operations manager of wastewater here at the town of Kenny Bunkport. 44 Mills is the cottages. She decided to remove...
They're the ones right across from Firefighters Park.
Yeah, directly across. She decided to remove them. For our purposes for this, they have not been moved off the site yet because they have not gotten the proper permitting, but they have capped the sewer and are no longer in use.
Okay.
So this is an abatement for unused.
Yeah. Okay. I, I need a little education what an abatement is.
So an abatement is the forgiving of a committed bill. So just like the taxes are committed, sewer is committed as well. And so you committed the sewer bills, and now we are asking for an abatement because there were reasons we did not know at that time.
And they're no longer using, okay.
Yeah.
You mind if we stay right there?
All right.
So moved.
Second.
The first and second, any more discussion? None? All in favor? Five-zero. Okay. Item 16, consider abatement for sewer service charge for 11 Wildwood Avenue, MBL 035-023-010 for Richard Stagger?
Stagger.
Stagger?
Stagger.
Family trust, IR, IR, IR.
Irrevocable.
Irrevocable, okay. Is that what that means?
Irrevocable, yeah.
Irrevocable trust.
So 11 Wildwood is, it was originally a full unit and then an ADU, and is now only a single unit. So it's just an adjustment back to one, one unit.
So, so moved.
Second.
The first and second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Five-zero. Item 17, consider abatement for sewer service charge for 83 Turbids Creek Road, MBL 020-001-003 for Field Point LLC.
So that one was a residence that has been demolished, and they, at this point, don't plan to rebuild anything. We let them know that if, when they so choose, they will be charged an impact fee at that time, but they are choosing to leave it as nothing at this point.
Vacant, vacant land?
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, all in favor? Five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item number 19.
18.
Cape Porpoise Pier Project Update.
18.
I thought, oh, I had it checked off, I'm sorry. Appointment of the ballot clerks for the June 10th, 2025 Annual Town Meeting.
Tracy's here.
Hi, Tracy.
Hi, again. So this is just a formality that's required by state law in Title 30A, that before every local election, we have to appoint ballot clerks. If it had been a state election, we could just use the clerks that we appoint every other year, but because there's no state ballot this time, we have to follow the 30A. So these are all people that have worked the polls before and have agreed to work again, with a few extras, just in case we have any last-minute cancellations.
So moved.
I have a first and second. All in favor? Five-zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 19, Cape Porpoise Pier Project Update by Eric Lebell.
Yeah, just to give you a quick update. The fuel contamination that we found at, at the site has all been removed, and right now, we've actually disposed of all the, any contaminated material that we'd had. We just found a little pocket of additional material that was out there. However, we're able to, per the DEP's direction, we're able to reutilize that on-site and use it in one of our trenches, so we did not have any additional. So all excavation at this point is, or any deep excavation, I'll qualify that, is, has been completed.
Right.
So the only, there might be some conduit, which will be anywhere between 30 and 36 inches deep that will go in, but that's about it. So most everything is done, at least the, the deep works, such as the tank placements, the catch bases, the storm drainage, anything that needed to be blow, frost depth, all that is done, so.
Did you have to blast or use hydrofracking or anything like that, or were you?
We did have to break some rock, yes, yeah. So for the water main and such, the new water mains coming in and such, did need to be, the trenches did need to be blasted for that, the tanks need to be blasted as well. They were upwards of eight to nine feet deep, so, yeah. The, so all of that is going well right now. We're going to be placing concrete back over the fuel tanks next week, so we're trying to slowly try to recapture some of that site to bring some, as much parking back as we can. Once that slab is set, that will become parking area as well, so that's going to be done on Wednesday. It's going to need to cure first, it's going to be tested, cured, brake cylinders to make sure that it's strong enough. So that is going well right now. They're, they remain somewhat on schedule, that I think they're going to be asking in this next change order number four, that I think the board previously approved, the work, that's when we had the contaminated soils and such. That's going to be revised, and there, there's going to be a request for some time extension, probably, I don't know how long yet, but it's probably, it may push us into November, with, right now currently, our end time was somewhere at the end of October. So they may push us a little bit into November for that, we'll see, to just to get substantial completion done.
But no cost impact?
No, no cost impacts on that. There is just delays on the, the fuel contamination, it caused some delays. We had to bring in other team members to bring, to come in and try to get that done, DEP specifically, as well as other environmental firms, so. So other than that, everything's going well. The, the excavation for the foundations have been done for the bait shed at this point. There are, the stringers have been laid for, for the north pier. They're going to be starting to do the decking, and then basically the building will be prepared, ready for, for Hardy Pond to be able to come in and start building the, the shed. At this point, with, at that point, once they finish that decking, they'll be moving to the south pier and transitioning everybody to the north pier. So let's go.
Cool.
Any questions?
When, when did you want the tour?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I should probably share that, it's going to be the sixth of June.
Sixth of June?
Yes, it'll be the Friday. So what we're looking is, we will be having a construction meeting on Friday at ten o'clock. We're hoping that the board can actually come on, at eleven o'clock that after, that, that morning and do the tour with us.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, don't go away. Wastewater system update?
Good evening again. Now I don't have to introduce, introduce myself. I'm here to give you an update, you know, as of last July, you're all pretty familiar with what happened, so I won't rehash that too much, but what I will go into is a lot of the steps that we've taken to make sure that something like that doesn't happen again to the town of Kenny Bunkport. When I started, Eric had a pretty, pretty good plan in place and we've been kind of putting things into action. Some of them are the installation of oxygen reduction potential probes. So for the layman, that is a probe that allows us to select for bacteria below zero. So a D O dissolved oxygen probe reads how much oxygen is in the water. ORP actually allows us to take it below zero to select for more robust bacteria that we can use to make sure that our plant is ultimately the most efficient it can be. We have also since put in new mixers in the toxic zone. That allows us to not have the air in the first part of our aeration tanks, which sounds funny, but that's what we do. That allows the same thing, to select the bacteria that are more preferable for us for treatment. We have upgraded the SCADA system, so for those of you that are familiar, SCADA is basically the computer software that we use to automate the plant. We've since put that in, it is fully live now. It is allowing us to have way better trending, a lot more control over the process itself and being able to, at some point here in the next few weeks, have remote access into the system. We are also in the process, we just put in an influent pH probe, just finished up the install this morning. So what we are using that for is, the suspected cause of July is toxicity dumping into the front of the biological system that we have. This influent pH probe would allow us to set alarms to let us know that possibly something was coming down the pipeline. And then we have put in some programs to be able to use one of the offline aeration tanks to try to capture as much of anything that may come down the system and isolate it from the rest of the system.
So when I read that, so is that, is that like an automatic thing that will happen, or is it?
No, it, it will have to be manual, the way it's currently set up, but the alarm will fire off automatically and go to everyone who's on call, including myself's phone. So you will get an alarm within the minute as soon as it goes too high or too low to go in and start dumping into this tank. I shouldn't say dumping. Pumping into the tank, yes, for holding until we can figure out what the source is and separating it from the rest of the system.
Right, that's excellent.
No, we are also implementing a bio augmentation program, so what that basically means for laymen's is we have cultured bugs, bacteria that we have in bags that we are able to add. So we've been adding for three weeks now and monitoring under the microscope and on the SCADA system and the affluent quality right now looks spectacular. We have moved to summertime, two aeration tanks are already online, two clarifiers online, David was just out there. We're in a good spot right now. We have also switched to what we call M C R T, that's mean cell resonance time for the layman. What that is, is a, a different way of operating the plant with the SCADA system to make sure that you have more capability to maintain the solids and the affluent quality. Yeah, that covers that. We have also added sour testing, which is specific oxygen uptake respiration. We do a test to make sure that the bacteria are viable. That's been added to our daily, that was not there before. That's another improvement we have made. We've also added, we've changed the chemical out at pump station twelve to help with the odors coming down that pipeline. We were actually, I was just out at one of our customers just adjacent to the Turbids Creek pump station and she said since we switched, she hasn't had to call us and she was very happy with the chemical switch, so.
And pump station twelve is where?
Goose Rock, yeah, yeah.
That's the main one at Goose Rock.
Yeah. So that dumps into Turbids and she is right at the top of Turbids.
Pumps into Turbids.
Yes, correct. Pumps into, pumps into the force main in the Turbids, correct. Well, it's, it's force main, so it is a pump.
Turbids station.
So while, at this point, you know, I can never with a biological system tell you that it's foolproof and there's no way we can stop anything from coming in, we have taken real steps to ensure that we are ready to handle anything that may come down the pipeline.
Good, very good.
Yeah, thank you for that.
That's good news.
Thank you Eric, great stuff.
Any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
They looked good the other day.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So I just want to say that Eric is a great leader in public works, that's why I've hired him three times. And he did a great job trying to handle a very difficult situation last year.
Sure is.
Came up with some recommendations and they've been implementing them, but Peter is the cherry on top of the sundae. And we are very fortunate that Peter decided to join our team. He comes with a lot of good experience. He has been great at implementing those and adding more to it. So we're very fortunate to have a great team there.
Good, yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item twenty-one, consideration of Woodard in current proposal for operations and maintenance manual.
So as part of, of operating the treatment plant, the, the DEP requires us to have it, what's called an O N M operations and maintenance program or, or on the shelf, ready for us. So we've gone through a lot of upgrades, as you are all aware, right now in the last several years. And we, so we put off doing this. So the last O N M manual that was done was two thousand and five, another one was done in two thousand and twelve. So we're now thirteen years and typically, we typically want to do one every, either ten years and/or anytime there's any significant upgrade to the treatment plan. So we're certainly at that point right now where we have done a lot of changes, as Peter talked about, we've got new mixers in, we've got new centrifuges in, we've got new pump stations in. We've, we've evaluated, we've assessed all our assets, we, we know what all our assets are. We've actually have a list of those put into our, 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 our work order systems and such, so we do have those assets. But right now, the next step is to have somebody assist us in evaluating all those assets and also just give us some guidance, some third-party assistance, and give us some guidance of what the best, best practices are for, one, maintenance and operations of the, of these items. We, we have a lot of assets, a lot of money. We want to make sure we're doing the best possible job that we can be with these assets. So that's really the purpose of this. We're, we're proposing that Woodard Curran, because they have been doing the lion's share of our work as, as our consultant there. We've, they, they've been a great consultant for us, have been doing good work, we're very happy with the work that they've been doing. And they're, they're also very intimately close with what we've done and what we have in place, because quite frankly, they've done the design on most of them, as, as of late. So what we're proposing right now is, we, we've put this off, but we're proposing to contract with them to develop this, this O N M plan for us, now that we're, we know we're going to pause a little bit with this, all this bonding that we've done and get that, that new program on the shelf for us to be able to utilize. So the proposal's for fifty thousand dollars, which is what we had actually budgeted in our professional line, our expert professional line that we had, so we're looking to try to engage them in that, in that area to be able to move that forward and get that completed before. You know, we've kind of put off the DEP a little bit on this, where it really, it's time for us to get this done.
Is, is this a paper document or is it a software system?
It's not a software system, it is a paper document. What they will do is actually, they will look at every piece, all the major assets that we have, and it sort of buries here from Woodard Curran, you can also speak to it. They've done, you know, they've, they provide us a sample of what they typically have done for the other towns like Bridgeton and such. It's a lengthy document, it's about a hundred and fifty page document for Bridgeton and they look at all your assets and they talk about what we should be doing and what kind of maintenance we should be doing for these individual assets. And what are the best practices? I mean, I can go to the manufacturer's recommendations, but sometimes it can be quite pricey and maybe a little more than what we need to do, or maybe it's not enough. So really, that's the assistance, the technical assistance we're looking for.
So it will be a PDF document that'll be accessible by phones.
Insertable.
Yep.
Any more questions for Eric?
I'll make a motion to approve the Woodward, Woodward and Curran contract for fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
I have a first and second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thanks Eric.
Thank you. Twenty-two, accept the following donations for the general nurses account. Five hundred dollars from the church on the Cape, a thousand dollars from Sean and Anne Smith, with much gratitude.
So moved.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Twenty-three, other business, David.
The only other business I have is just to let the board know, the main housing did give the neighborhood housing trust a grant for the six units on Beach Wood Ave that will have a groundbreaking, are we, we're not in June yet, we're not in June, so next month. So you're all invited to the groundbreaking.
June eighteenth.
June eighteenth, okay. And you're all invited to that, but this will allow the housing trust to be able to sell some of those units to a low, at a lower price point, therefore more affordability. So we are one of the, we didn't know if we were going to get it, but we were one of the ones that the main housing has decided to give the money to.
That's, that's great.
I don't know exactly.
It's over a hundred.
Yeah.
Over a hundred per house?
Yes, yes. It's a very significant grant.
Over a hundred thousand per house?
Per unit, yep.
Wow.
For the grant, I thought it was seventy thousand.
Oh, maybe tonight, yeah. We'll get that confirmed. It's very generous.
Hundred and fifty from the state.
Two hundred thousand from the state.
We really thought it was going to be zero, so whatever we got.
Whatever we write in our notes.
We're thankful for.
Is that it, David?
That's all I have, oh, that's all I have. I am getting an update as we speak.
I'm all set, thank you.
As am I.
You have, have to.
I, I have to have, say something. I was remiss in not mentioning the K B A, which is the organization that sort of takes care of the, the businesses and the, what goes on in the town. They're very active, they're all, all volunteer, very good people. I know sometimes, I know the Prelude, sometimes people get not too happy with the crowds, et cetera, when, when they come to town, but I have to tell you, we're on the probably fourth generation since, since we, K B A started Prelude. And about fifteen years ago, we started the fireworks on the second weekend. And I have to mention that Stephen Pelkey is the owner and he was the one that came on board and he was actually one of my students. And so when he came on board, I think he was happy to do it and he had both my husband and myself in school and he, he gave us such a deal for Prelude and he's never gone back on it. It's been, however, fifteen years and we're still paying the same amount for fireworks. He's, they're, they're a wonderful company, we thank them and they make Prelude, you know, it's a part of Prelude that, that's very important and I thank all the volunteers.
That's why we gave you a fireworks picture.
Yes, and that's, that's why I got the fireworks picture. But thanks to the K B A and thanks to all of you.
Thank you. I have nothing.
I got a lot.
I know you do.
But Eric is going to give you some good news, it's the only time you'll see him that he's giving you good news.
You don't need any more money, right?
No, no, this is something, this is actually something you folks approved a while back, so, yeah, the Colony Beach is, we've been working, picking away at the Colony Beach and we've had our, our internal staff working on that right now, the highway staff, so we brought in, we've actually removed a lot of the live stone that was there, kind of moved it back to the edge of the beach and excavated some of that material out and placed new inch and a half gravel down. And today we're placing down three-quarter inch gravel on top of that for rideability. So we're hoping to open that Colony Beach up this weekend for party.
Wonderful.
Oh, wow, that's good news.
Yeah, not happy to hear about it, nor Easter coming up.
I know.
Well, we said we would do it one time, right?
We'll give it a day.
Maybe a day, but hey, go down there and park.
Yeah, so I'm happy to say that I think we should, we should be opened up this weekend and hopefully PD will be managing the, the gate there.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Where else you go?
So the other thing is, I gave you all an invitation to the head of the harbor, where Woodard and Curran has done some analysis of different options for consideration. You are all invited, it is on June tenth at Atlantic Hall. And Public Works will be sending out notices tomorrow to the residents along Pier Road and inviting them to that event. So we wanted to make you aware of that. We also want to remind you of the Cape Porpoise Pier tour we're going to be giving on June sixth at eleven for the board. This is not a public tour, so we'll be having our construction meeting right prior at ten, so the engineers will be there as well as Sean Tuwi from Prok to take you through and give you an update. And I believe you're all coming, right?
Yes.
The one other thing I wanted to make you aware of is an issue that developed this week regarding trash. So.
Trash?
Trash. So you may be familiar with the business Noble that picks up trash in town. So they became aware of the changes in the ordinance amendments and talked to town staff this week about the fact that they were concerned that the town was no longer going to be covering the cost of tipping fees for their customers. So that news came as a surprise to me because my understanding was we did not pay for any tipping fees that were not picked up by Casella. We previously picked up commercial businesses and paid for their tipping fees, but only if they were a Casella customer. So Public Works staff has done some review and follow-up with Casella. So remember that there are two divisions of Casella. There's the division of Casella that does our pickup and then there's the contract we had with Casella for the land filling, for our tipping. So the pickup Casella was aware that it was only us. The tipping Casella, I would say, was not as aware of that because they confirmed that they were letting Noble charge their tonnage to the town. So when we receive the invoices from Casella for tipping, there's no delineation about where it came from or even how many loads or what loads, it's just the tonnage for the month. So I was surprised, I wanted to make you aware of that, since I've told you before that we don't pick up anybody else's tonnage. Eric is going to be meeting with them tomorrow morning at eight-thirty. I think that their concern is that they think because they're picking up residents' trash that we should pay for that tonnage. My concern is that I have no control over where they're picking up and who they're picking up from, and even though they may be picking up resident trash, they're still a commercial client and they would be considered.
It's a separate contract that resident has with them, right?
That is correct. That is correct. So I understand that they've already billed all their customers for the year, they bill in advance and that is a concern, I think, that they have. Eric will follow up with them tomorrow, but in case you heard any news about this, I wanted you to be aware of it.
Not that it matters, but would that have also impacted the tonnage at Eco Main?
So we'll have less.
A lot less. Potentially.
Yeah, so, and of course, moving, assuming the town votes for the Eco Main contract, we start with Eco Main in July and then they would not be going to Casella anymore, so that's another stumbling block. But I wanted to make you aware, I don't know if Eric, you have anything to add, but.
I'm really just going to meet with them, I'm going to hear what they have to say, basically explain to them the fact. basically explain to them the fact of January first, that we're, we're not doing commercial, uh, we're not paying for commercial tipping, so.
Well, we're not paying for any tipping that's outside of our residential.
Right, so Casella, or.
With Casella.
Casella is the only contractor that we are paying.
For residential.
And taking it to now Eco Main.
Potentially to Eco.
Potentially.
Yep, so, um, I'm, we're just going to clarify this for them.
Because my guess is they will tell their customers and their customers may contact you.
Okay.
I, I mean, we're talking.
Do we know how many customers, roughly?
I, 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 I don't, but if I'm a residential customer, a hundred and thirty dollars per ton, two thousand pounds of garbage, if I'm a residential customer, if I provide twenty pounds, that is a dollar thirty, right? I mean, it's that of trash.
That's kind of.
I mean, so I want to put it in perspective, what, what cost impacts we're talking about here.
Yeah.
I, I would believe it'd be more than twenty pounds.
Well, for a trash, for, if you were to pick up my trash this week, for example, let's say I had twenty pounds.
On a weekly basis, it's like another.
Yeah, it's like another.
Two hundred bucks.
Yeah.